Good morning. The Committee on General Government Operations Appropriation of Housing is now called to order. Today is Friday, August 7th, and the time now is 9:10. I'd like to first, number one, apologize for we started late. And what we had to do was just set up the panel so we can get all four panelists to be able to speak one time, and then we could move this a lot more efficiently. Notices for this public hearings were disseminated via email to all senators and main media broadcasting outlets. First public notice was issued on Friday, July 31st. Second notice was issued on Tuesday, August 4th. The committee will hear and accept testimonies on Bill 215-35COR, sponsored by senators, authored by Senator Minority Leader, Senator Telo T. Titigui, co-sponsored by Senator Luis B. Munia, Senator Kelly Mars, and Senator Will Castro. An act amend, section 6, 301 of Article 3, Chapter 6, Division 1, Title 5, Guam Code Annotated, Relative to Maximum Limits of Governmental Liability. I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues that have joined me. To my immediate left is the Minority Leader, Senator Telo Titigui, and to my immediate right is Senator Will Castro. The general rules for the public hearing. Those testifying on behalf of the bills will be recognized by myself, and I will recognize them right now, so we, just to identify them upfront, we have David Lubowski, we have Robert Keogh. If I murder your name, please tell me, and I can correct it. John Bell and Shannon Titino. All right? Written testimony shall be submitted to the committee. Please provide my legislative staff with your written testimony for photocopying. Testimony may be read, and I think testimony should be summarized to about five minutes, but if you need more time, just please just continue. Hopefully, it's not a whole hour, but you know, please feel free. Testimony shall be confined to the substance. We're talking about the bill. We try to focus on the bill. We may go a little bit outside of it, and there's not a problem with that one. We can work around this. Individuals, you all be allowed to present oral testimony. And once you're done, you are now being asked to remain in the room for additional questions or additional testimony, as may be desired by the members of the committee. Proper form and decorum shall be practiced by all present in the public hearing room for this proceedings. Individuals who fail to maintain proper form and decorum may be restricted from providing oral testimony and/or may be asked to leave. When you speak, please make sure that the microphone is on, and that you speak into the microphone. Please state your name and your title, if you have any other than being a concerned citizen. We'll now begin to discuss Bill 215-35. I will now begin with Mr. Dave. Oh, I apologize. I forgot. I asked the author of the bill to please give her opening statement on her bill. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Si dos ma si, Mr. Chair. An hafa de, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for scheduling this public hearing on Bill 215-35, which seeks to increase the maximum limits the government of Guam is authorized toward claimants through the Government Claims Act, as provided in Chapter 6, Title 5, Guam Code Annotated. For reference, Mr. Chair, according to BB Mar's fiscal note on Bill 215, from a period of 2015 to 2019, which averaged 235,500 in legislative appropriations, only 65.75% of the funds appropriated by the legislature for the government of Guam claims was spent. Mr. Chair, Public Law 13-116 enacted in December of 1975 limited claims against the government of Guam to $35,000 in an action of wrongful death, and not more than $100,000 in any other tort action. The Government Claims Act was later repealed and reenacted in November of 1983 by the 17th Guam Legislature through Public Law 17-29, which increased the limits on claims against the government of Guam to $100,000 in an action of wrongful death, and $300,000 in any tort action. Mr. Chairman, we cannot sit idle or wait another 40 years before we update our government claims law and provide fair and just compensation to victims, considering a number of other U.S. jurisdictions have much higher caps. For example, Oregon's liability cap ranges between $126,000 and up to $4 million. Vermont authorizes an award of $500,000 to any one person, and that the maximum aggregate liability shall be $2 million to all persons arising out of each occurrence. And the Georgia Department of Human Services is authorized to pay $1 million for each person and $3 million per aggregate occurrence. Mr. Chairman, included in Public Law 17-29 from 1975, which was the last time the maximum limit of the Government Claims Act were adjusted, in a comment made on the record which reads, "The tort limitations are raised to take into account inflation, increased court awards, and the need of the victims of the tort." While the intent of Bill 215 doesn't take into action further findings, finding needs should there be higher awards authorized, the measure recognized the current limits on government liability haven't been adjusted since 1975, and that these caps should be increased in order to commensurate with the rising cost of health care, legal defense, and court fees, and other goods and services. Si dos ma si, Mr. Chair, for moving forward with Bill 215, and for this opportunity briefly introduce this measure. I look forward to listening to the testimonies this morning, and to making any amendments that be necessary to strengthen this legislation. Si dos ma si.
Thank you, Senator Titigui. We will now begin with Mr. Dave Lubowski. Sir.
My name is David Lubowski. Thank you, senators, for allowing me to submit and give testimony today. First of all, I wanted to say that I'm a ULG graduate of 1976, and I can tell you, cost of living is really different from today than it was back then. So, in effect, I'm in support of Bill 215-35. The bill is easy to understand, support, and justify purely from an economical viewpoint. As much as I'm here to support it, I would also be amiss to say that I would have liked to see it have larger financial increases than is presented, based realistically on current cost of living, inflation, and values today as compared to 37 years ago. Using the year 1983, 37 years ago, cost of living figures, according to the American Institute for Economic Research Cost of Living Calculator, $100,000 then equals $594,000 today, which is $58,000 more than what is requested today to align cost of living with this bill. Also, $300,000 37 years ago now equals $775,783. This is more than $275,000 of what is being requested today to align cost of living. The two requested increases from 100 to 200, and 300 to 500, based on cost of living, are substantially lower than what things really cost in the inflation value today. The bill does not request enough, but the intent is to make things on par, and at the same time stay frugal for taxpayers. I support that. This is one reason I think the amount should be higher, but the bill aims at realistically increasing damage awards while being financially frugal at the same time. I also support the bill, as is my opinion that damages related to malpractice at the hospital, whether that be resulting in death or injury, need to be taken seriously, and maybe, just maybe, higher damage amounts may deter medical negligence. It's often said that higher tort damages can deter tort conduct. A person will be less willing to engage in intentional tort conduct if he knows you will have to pay for the harm. Therefore, to the extent that defendant can engage in tort conduct and not be held fully accountable financially, the maximum deterrent effect of the law is not being realized. It's my belief that the higher levels of damage compensation required by this bill and eventual law will help to deter tort behavior, and help to make people within the government and at GMH more accountable, and at the same time more fairly compensate victims, even though not to the extent that cost of living changes whatever equates. It is also my opinion that this bill will be a step in the right direction to make government workers, and again, most importantly, medical staff at GMH accountable and responsible with higher tort penalties. Accountability leads to less apathy. It's a basic psychological tenet when doing one's job, which is, in my opinion, is part of the problem at GMH. A lack of accountability leading to apathy negatively impacts medical care. I would also like to point out that, in my opinion, as stated, the proposed amounts, while a good start, will not make a person whole again when you figure in legal fees, continued medical care for an injury, and a host of other expenses that an injured person may face and have to pay for, including off-island travel. I support this law, being the realist that I am, and from my own experience, I also know that may take forever to get back to this table with anything better than this that would better compensate Guam citizens. So, this bill is a great start. And I emphasize "start." And to finish, I would like to add my personal thoughts to this bill, or any similar bills. I do not think personally that the people of Guam should pay for medical negligence at GMH, whether this bill allows, or any of these bills allow, which is the case now, and will be with this bill. If a GMH doctor makes a negligent mistake, that doctor should pay for that mistake, or at least in part through their own malpractice insurance, not the taxpayers, which perpetuates the apathy among our medical professionals, knowing that they or anyone else who works for the government are not responsible to those that they harm. In essence, as citizens, we are paying for our own injury. If someone in the government injures us, we're really paying for it through our own tax dollars, relieving them of any responsibility. I support this bill, and at the same time hope eventually for a full reform of the Government Claims Act to be more consumer realistic and accountable, while protecting the taxpayers at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sir, Mr. Robert Keogh.
Keogh, yes.
All right. I'm on track. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. I've submitted written testimony, which I'm not just going to read, I will just submit that into the record. I will state that I am a private law practitioner. I've been out here for nearly 43 years. I generally represent plaintiffs in injury claims. I've represented numerous claimants in Government Claims Act claims. The concept of caps is something that is imposed in order to protect the fiscal health of, in this case, the government. And I understand that point. However, it does place the burden on those who are injured. I've also given a citation to a website that lists out what the cap situation is in all 50 states. Many states have no caps whatsoever. Guam currently, and even under this proposed legislation, would be at the low end of the scale of caps. Many of the caps, as Senator said during her opening statement, go up into the millions. The first line of defense against any kind of frivolous claim is the judges, the courts. I put an example in my testimony of a case I handled about two years ago, of a young six-year-old girl who had the tip of her finger severed by an accident where two school buses negligently actually racing each other crashed side by side, windows crashed in, she lost the tip of her finger. The Attorney General's Office forced us to go to trial on that case. They refused to settle, and at the end of a two-day trial, Judge La Morena awarded that young six-year-old girl, even though, as Judge La Morena said from the bench, "Oh, my goodness, it's her wedding ring finger." The tip of her finger was gone at six years old. It'll never grow back. It's gone for the rest of her life. He awarded her $35,000. Of course, I argued that the claim had greater value than that, but Judge La Morena disagreed. And there's no arguing with that. The judges control damages, up to a maximum limit that's imposed by law. My only comment on this is that, yes, this is long overdue to increase the limit. I would prefer personally that there be no limit at all, but I understand that's not going to happen. It is the case in many jurisdictions that there are no limits, and damages are what the damages are. It's what a judge would determine the value of the claim to be. You don't get jury trials against the government of Guam, so you don't have the risk of what's called a runaway jury, of a jury awarding a billion dollars to somebody because they're angry at what happened. You're not going to have a judge do something like that. The caps are there simply to protect the budget of the government. You cannot sue the individual government employee personally. They have immunity for their actions done within the course and scope of their employment. The only comment I would add to this bill is to put in a provision of retroactive application, because if that's not there, it will only be applied prospectively from the time that it is imposed. If you have retroactive application, it would give this increased potential of recovery to those whose claims are pending or have already accrued but have not been pursued yet. The second line of defense that I would talk about here is enforcement of the Government Claims Act alone. The Government Claims Act in and of itself works if it is enforced. There are provisions within the act. For example, you're given, the government agency is given six months from the time of filing the government claim to investigate. In 40-plus years, I have never had a government agency settle a claim within the six months. They use that six months to let time pass. Maybe this claim will be resolved on somebody else's watch, not mine. And I have always, every single time, had to file a case in court. Once the case is filed in court, there have been settlements. More often than not, we end up going to trial on these and have a judge decide liability and damages. In the Government Claims Act, there is a provision that says if the government does not investigate the claim during the six-month period, the Superior Court judge may award attorney's fees, in addition to whatever the damages are, to the claimant. In all of these years, I have never had a judge award attorney's fees. There's just no enforcement of that provision. There's nothing I can say that either this legislation, or claiming, you know, putting the Government Claims Act instead of making it may compel an award of attorney's fees, to have government agencies actually investigate claims and resolve them without having to use the resources of the courts. I endorse this legislation. I agree that it's not far enough, but it is a step in the right direction. So, I compliment the legislature for taking this under consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. John Bell, sir.
Good morning.
You're next.
Good morning, senators. I thank you for your time and inviting me to address this issue. I think a brief personal background is sometimes requested, so what it's worth. I was born and raised in Timouning, went to public school here, joined the military, earned a philosophy degree from San Diego State, a law degree from California Western School of Law. I am licensed as an attorney on Guam and by the state of California, and I have about eight years of practice in civil litigation. My law school mentor and employer was a personal injury attorney, and I have a fair amount of experience in that area, as well as some experience with the government claims process. As a private practice plaintiff's attorney, much of my job entails quantifying the severity of an injury and trying to make my client whole. We can't go back in time to right the wrong that was suffered, but we can compensate them accordingly. We factor in things like medical bills, pain and suffering, the need for therapy, et cetera. Some injuries are catastrophic and would really cost millions to make the person whole, and we rarely get what we want, but we usually get the injured person or their family what they can live with. On a personal note, while researching this bill, I read about a pretty horrific injury, apparently suffered by local attorney Joe McDonald, caused by negligent road conditions for cyclists down in Tomb One. I had a similar incident a couple of years ago that was thankfully more of a near miss. There were a couple of spots on Timouning sidewalks where apparently those extremely sturdy steel posts that hold street signs were taken down, but there are a few inches sticking out of the sidewalk. It's like a booby trap, because they are about the same color as the sidewalk, and they're tough to see. So, there I was jogging down the sidewalk toward Okapaleis with my three-year-old son and a jogging, or sorry, three-month-old son and a jogging stroller, and did not see it coming. We hit that little nub that was left over so hard and so suddenly that my face was smashed into the stroller handlebar, and the stroller went flying toward oncoming traffic. Thankfully, I had the sense to tether the stroller to myself in case of that kind of an emergency. That was the only reason my infant son did not go all the way into oncoming traffic. I reported the unsafe condition to the mayor's office, and I hope the issue has been addressed. I took a pretty good beating, but my son was fine, and I left it alone, but it was a sobering reminder of why these negligence liability issues matter so much. The public should know, and I think that they do, that we understand the need to protect the government treasury. I was taught in law school that we install sovereign immunity restrictions and place caps on taxpayer-funded liability so that we can keep our government operating with a financial strength and confidence. Nobody wants to bankrupt our government, but the twin aims of torts are compensation and deterrence. This bill more fairly compensates the victims of negligence and deters government officials from ignoring unsafe conditions. We want it to be cheaper to fix unsafe conditions than to have to pay out money to victims or their families. While I personally may have raised the caps higher, I won't second-guess your research too much, and completely understand the need to strike that balance between compensating victims and protecting taxpayers. In the middle of a global pandemic, and when national and perhaps local politics at times have gotten pretty ugly, it's nice to see bipartisan support for a no-brainer of a bill. I think the bill is long overdue and addresses an obvious need. It is low-hanging fruit, and I'm only left wondering why it took 40 years to raise the caps. I thank you and your colleagues for addressing this, and wanted to just chime in a little bit on a couple of things that Attorney Keogh said. As far as retroactive application, I think that makes a lot of sense. I don't, I think, you know, I'm no expert on ex post facto's law, but my general recollection is for criminal statutes, you can't do that, but for civil statutes, you can. So, it could be retroactive. I think that would be fair and actually make a lot of sense. And then the attorney's fees provision, I won't, you know, I'm just going to stick to this topic, but I will say that in other areas of law, very, very similar, it's extremely frustrating when you don't get attorney's fees, and sometimes when you're dealing with the government, they just kind of make things expensive and difficult for as long as they can, and that really runs up the attorney's fees. And so, I would just chime in to agree with Mr. Keogh that attorney's fees would be great, especially in the circumstances that he discussed, where it doesn't seem like the government's really doing a good faith effort sometimes to try to resolve the claims at a low level. So, thank you again for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Titino. Thank you.
You guys understand me, because I would prefer to leave my mouth on. If you can't, is that better? Okay, thank you. My name is Shannon Titino. I'm the chief deputy at the Attorney General's Office. I'm here because our office handles or processes or receives claims for line agencies only. And I won't repeat what the other gentlemen provided in their testimony. Our office, of course, doesn't take a position on the measure, but we recognize that it's the legislature's purview to set the caps, adjust the caps, and we acknowledge the fact that it's been many years since these caps were established. As I said, our office receives government claims on behalf of the line agencies, and for purposes of my presentation today, I just wanted to provide stats or information on the number of claims that we have currently. So, pending at our office, claims against line agencies, there are 68. As it pertains to this measure, which is to increase the caps for torts, we have six auto accident tort claims, two other tort claims that are employee-related or negligence, and then two personal injury claims, and three property damage claims. I also have stats for years, fiscal years prior to this current fiscal year, and will submit that with my written testimony. I don't want to take up any more of your time, but if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer it. Again, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Titino. I'd like to also recognize two other colleagues that have joined us, Senator Pito Turlay, and we also have Senator Kelly Marsh Titino. Thank you. I would like to start asking just a few questions and make a few comments. For Dave, for Mr. Lubowski, on your page two, I agree with you totally on your last paragraph, but we need to figure out how we can make that work. And I'm going to read his statement so that everybody hears why I, how I support it. On the second sentence, "I don't think the people of Guam should pay for medical negligence at GMH." I agree with that. Taxpayers shouldn't be paying for somebody that, if you're negligent, you're accountable, you pay for it. That's why you got the profession. Do your job. Do it right. Hopefully, do the best you can. Then it goes on further. "The doctors should pay for that mistake, or at least in part through their own malpractice insurance, not the taxpayers, which perpetuates the apathy among our medical professionals, knowing that they are or anyone who works for the government are not responsible to those that are harmed, and in essence, we as injured citizens are paying ourselves for our own taxes, with our own taxes for their medical negligence." I agree with that, Dave. I just wanted to make that statement clear. With Mr. Keogh, I've listened to all your hearings and your testimonies. I noticed on the very bottom, you asked for a retro amendment. What were you, what are we looking at? You're looking at going back, what, one year, two years, or is there any specific period? Because we don't want to identify it by people. We want to identify it by time period, right? Maybe that's, I'm going to assume that's what you're after. Retro, retro, if this bill was to pass, we're retroing it to what, January 2020, or are we looking at how far back?
It would be the date that the claim accrued, and within the statute of limitations. The statute of limitations on a government claim, well, any negligence claim is two years. So, if the claim has accrued within the past two years, and this new cap would apply to that claim. If the claim has already been filed and is pending, either administrative action or in court, it would apply to that claim, but not beyond the statute of limitations. It's the date of accrual of the claim.
Oh, okay. Okay, I can agree to that. I just thought there was any specific time.
If it's not stated in the law, it's going to be up to the court to interpret what the intent was, and the question is whether the.
When they're retired, when we get injured, it's for life, which the injury is for life. And we get compensated appropriately by the Veterans Administration. So, I was just kind of like, kind of bothered by that, but I'm not going to get into it too much. I like to focus on, I'll work with the author of the bill, so we can take a look at the amendment, to do it retro to when it was applied and within the statute of limitation. All right, Mr. Keogh?
Yeah, my point on that, on that case, has nothing to do with the actual intent of this statute. My point is that the first line of defense for the government is the judiciary. And, I mean, I will say, our judges here are conservative in awarding damages. So, you put a $200,000 or a $500,000 cap on an injury, that doesn't mean you're going to get $500,000 for every injury. You get what a court decides is the value of your claim.
Yes.
So, that's the line of defense to protect the government's fiscal health.
All right. Thank you, sir. And on Mr. Bill. And on Mr. Bell, I'm just, when I read your statement, gosh, you have a personal note on it, on exactly what happened. You have a personal note of exactly what happens. And that's something that the people of Guam have noticed, that when the government fails to protect our own people by removing these dangers out there, it's amazing how we just continue to do business. No different, it's like everybody's saying when you're driving down Marine Drive, or when you're walking down the sidewalk, and you've got this big power pole on the sidewalk, that's not a sidewalk no more. That's a power pole walk. They need to be able to identify, and I'm really hoping that GPA would go into that motion before they put the pole, make it be a true sidewalk, and put a rail. Because exactly what you wrote here shouldn't have happened.
Thank you.
And I'm really hoping that the government takes note that if this bill passes, we need to find a way to, because you mentioned something, I think both of you mentioned about their attorney's fees. Is that being, that's being awarded? Is this part of this package or no?
I defer to Mr. Keo on that one, but.
What, I'm sorry, what's the question?
When you got the attorney's fees for getting paid for, if you win, you know, win the settlement, or is that being taken care of? And is it part of this compensation or payment?
Yeah, under the current law, and this law would not change that, under the current law, you do not, you're not awarded, you're not capable of being awarded attorney's fees on an injury claim unless there is a finding by the judge that the government agency did not investigate the claim during the six-month investigative period. Then you can be awarded attorney's fees, but it doesn't happen. So no, there is no award of attorney's fees against the government.
So if the government wants, they can drag their feet all they want, is basically what I'm hearing? And nothing happens, and everybody spends money, the victim, the attorney, everybody spends money, but, and it's okay. Is that basically what I'm hearing, sir?
Attorney's fees.
I'm hoping not to hear that, but that's what I'm interpreting.
Attorney's fees would have to come out of whatever the award is.
Okay.
So out of that $35,000 that that young girl got, she had to pay a percentage of that, to me, to take her case all the way to trial.
Maybe we need to put some sort of amendment there so that they understand that when the government doesn't do their due diligence, then somebody's got to pay. You know, it's got to work, and there's a reason why people sue. They're not suing to make a living. They're suing for negligence and for so forth and so forth. So I just wanted to make that statement, sir. Thank you, sir. Senator Titigui, the author of the bill, I have no further questions. I'm in support of the bill, Senator Titigui, and if I can be a co-sponsor, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely, Mr. Chair, and thank you so much. I think your comment with the retroactive application is your door in by making that amendment to the bill, and we'll work with legal to ensure that it's done properly. You know, I also would like to express my Don Quixote de los masi for my co-sponsors, Senator Luis Munia, Kelly Marsh Titanow, and Will Castro for being co-sponsors and understanding the importance of making individuals whole. And there is a couple of questions I'd like to ask the Attorney General's Office. And so Shannon, on an average.
Yes.
How many months or years do claimants have to wait until their claims are fully paid by the government?
Well, the government, for torts, the torts are paid out of the Government Claims Fund. The Government Claims Fund is actually administered by the Department of Administration, but when the claims come in, we work with the agencies to determine or and review the claim against the agency. And if we, if we are able to receive, basically, an affirmation from the agency that the damage did occur as a result of the government, we then would prepare a document for the claimant to sign, and then we forward that to the Department of Administration to issue a check. So we can't, we don't actually control when the check is issued.
I see. Oh, so that's all under the control of Department of Administration with regards to.
That's correct. The Government Claims Fund pays for tort claims, and so that is administered by the Department of Administration, not our office. We don't issue checks. When the checks are released from the Department of Administration, they are forwarded to our office, and then we contact the claimant, and they're able to pick up the check, but the actual cutting of the check is a Department of Administration function.
And have you heard that sometimes when the claimant was awarded and found that they were, it was definitely negligent on the part of the government, that D O A has sometimes put into like payment plans to the claimant and not awarding them the full amount upfront, and that it's caused some kind of, you know, delay in making them whole right away? Have you heard of that?
No, Senator, I have not heard of a.
Okay, I will seek that answer from Department of Administration now that I know that the Attorney General has nothing to do with the payment to the claimant, that it is now at D O A, so we'll seek some answers to some of my questions with regards to that. You mentioned earlier that you have pending 68 cases?
Yes.
Okay, currently?
Yes, Senator.
And of those claims, how many were, well, it's pending, but what is the average? Does the Attorney General? Of course, it's the judge that makes the decision on how much to be awarded, but.
Well, if I may, so at the administrative level, we would work out what, if we don't give the full amount, then we'll determine, you know, through review, analysis, and discussion within our office and our client, what should the amount be? And if the claimant agrees to that amount, we then pay the claimant that amount. If, and there are cases, I acknowledge that sometimes the claim is not resolved at the administrative level, and it goes to court, the court will then determine what that amount would be to pay the claimant, or in that case, it's now the plaintiff.
But a lot of times, the Attorney General's Office is there to try and settle the case with the claimant?
Yes, yes, we try to. Again, we have to work with the agencies because we were, we don't know what actually happened, so we have to investigate with the agencies on what actually happened to determine the liability of the government. And if there is a liability, what amount should be paid toward that liability?
Shannon, can you speak to the process in which an individual coming, who are suing the government of Guam, they felt they were, or for instance, you know, Attorney McDonald, what happened to him? Where he sued the government of Guam, that was mentioned in the testimony from Mr. Bell. In fact, I even have the article here with regards to the award would happen, which that's terrible, you know, what happened to Attorney McDonald. But can you explain for the listening public how this actually worked the process? If I were to feel that I was, you know, hurt, and it was, I felt it was the fault of the government, what is my first step? And can you also mention in that process timelines? It's very important for timelines.
Absolutely. So if an individual wants to file a claim against the government of Guam, against our line agencies, they could come to our office. We have a claim form at our office that they could fill out. It has all the statutory information that's required to be included in the claim, and then after that, we then would review it with the agency that is being accused of the action, if you will. The claimant has 18 months from the time the claim or injury arose to file a government claim with our office. I believe that's what the statute said, and any of these attorneys can correct me if I'm wrong, but, and then, and then if, and as Attorney Keo said, our office usually reviews these claims within six months and tries to provide the claimant an answer within that time. If they don't hear from us, they, of course, can go to the court to appeal, or if they don't like our position, they, of course, have the option of going to Superior Court to file an appeal.
If I may, just to interject right here, to verify, after the claim is filed to the Attorney General, the individual, then the Attorney General's Office has six months in order to respond to this claimant?
Yes, that's my understanding. Usually, you take six months to try and review and resolve these claims.
Okay.
And if not, then they go to court.
And if not, that the Attorney General's Office did not step in or, you know, to try to go in for a settlement or anything like that, the time, the clock has run out, then at that point, the claimant then could go to the courts to file suit with the court, but does that still, so that means they would have to go there, and while they're there, the Attorney General can still have the opportunity to approach the claimant?
Oh, yes, during that time, we can certainly try and.
Okay. So, and on an average, how many cases are, in one year, let's say you have, let's just give a figure, 50 cases in one year, how many of those are usually not addressed within the six-month period?
I don't have that information in front of me, but as part of what I will submit to the legislature, I'll include that.
I greatly appreciate that because that's, you know, time for everybody is money and, you know, long period of time, like anything, even in construction, the longer you wait, it costs money every day, you know? So there, plus, your case is important, you know, time-wise to prove a case. So then after that, after six months, if the Attorney General does not contact the claimant, then after that happens, it could go to court, and then what is the 18-month period comes in? They have 18 months? Can you explain that timeframe?
Yeah, I believe the statute, and I apologize because I don't handle government claims in our office, but the way I understand it from our claims officer in our litigation division is the statute says they have 18 months from the time the claim arose to file a claim with, if it's against a line agency.
Okay.
With our office, and then if they have a claim against an autonomous agency such as the hospital, they would file it directly with them.
Okay, so they, it's a statute of limitations to 18 months, if I'm not mistaken?
Yeah.
Okay, so within the time of the accident, and they have 18 months, so it's a statute. And I've noticed too, when I was doing my research, that a lot of times it is two years, you know, the majority.
Yeah, it can be two years if they don't hear from our office.
It's two years if they don't.
18 months to 20, 18 to 24 months, right?
Okay.
It's 18 months if they get a response from our office, and if it's 24, I believe, if they don't.
If they don't hear from your office? So they can actually start the clock with just one acknowledgement of your claim and saying that we are reviewing it, and then the time clock, okay.
No, it's from the time the claim arose.
Erose, right, okay. So that's the process, and then whether you go to court or you settle with the Attorney General's Office?
Well, yes. We handle the settlement on behalf of the agency that the claim is against.
Okay. Attorney Keo, you mentioned, of course, you know, the enforcement of Government Claims Act part, that section, the enforcement. Can you explain a little bit more by what you mean by, you know, the enforcement of the Government Claims Act? What did you mean by that exactly?
Right, what I was referring to was the attorney's fee provision.
Oh, I see.
That's as if you do not, if the government agency does not investigate the claim within the six-month period that it has under the administrative process, the court is authorized to award attorney's fees. So when I was talking about enforcement, I was saying the court has the right to award attorney's fees, they just don't do it.
I see.
So, I mean, from my experience, and my experience is just one snapshot, I'm only one attorney practicing here, but I've never had a court award attorney's fees for non-enforcement.
Have you?
And I will say that in that case with the young girl, there was another case I had a few years ago where a young high school student was in, when they used to have these, what did they call them, on graduation day or homecoming day, they would have these parades of cars, there was a term, I forget what the term is.
Motorcade.
Motorcade, thank you. They would have these motorcades. I think they're not doing those so much anymore because this young girl was in a teacher's car in a motorcade, and that car was speeding, it was raining, it crashed into another car, and she was catastrophically injured. That claim was against the Department of Education. They fought it eventually. I think on the eve of trial, that case was settled for the statutory limit, and then it took years for the government to pay that. It was paid bit by bit, as Attorney Titanow mentioned, it was done through the Department of Administration. They paid it $20,000 every six months or so. It took years to get that paid because there's no ability to bring an enforcement action against the government. You can't go and attach the legislature's building or any other government funds. You can't go and attach them. It's just up to the Department of Administration to pay these judgments off. So that's what I'm talking about enforcement, is that there are laws in place that help claimants bring their claims. It's up to the courts to enforce them.
Is there any laws in other states? Because I was looking through, you know, all the states and reviewing it, excuse me, but it was talking about, you know, statute limitations, liability limits, but it never said anything there in particular with attorney's fees being awarded upfront, shall be awarded, or anything like that. Do you have any kind of information with regards to that? If not, you know, I'll do my research anyways to receive it, to review it, but is there anything that we can put in this legislation that would require the courts to address, to make whole, not just the claimant, but, you know, the claimant's responsibilities, which means medical bills and attorney's fees?
Yeah, well, awards of attorney's fees can only be done by two methods. One, if you have a contract, and the government wouldn't have a contract with an injured person, or by statute. There are statutes in, throughout the nation, federal statutes, the Civil Rights Act, for example, if you win on your claim, you can get an award of attorney's fees, but it has to be by statute. Again, that's beyond the purview of this statute, but if the legislature were to consider putting an award of attorney's fees into a government claims act, I would be here endorsing that because what that would do would be to give further incentive to settle these cases, which is what everybody wants. You want these claims settled, not to have to go to court to get a judge to award your damages.
And then, and that's exactly my point, you know, deter, you know, we talk about deterrence, and this is one way to do that as well, you know, even on the processing of litigation, you know, it's important to, you know, avoid any, you know, hardship on both sides.
Yes.
On the government dime as well as the claimant. So I greatly appreciate it, and allow my colleagues to have any questions that they have, and appreciate every, I mean, greatly appreciate you guys being here. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Tyler. Senator Will, and you'll be followed by Senator Pito. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. (speaking Spanish) Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, gentlemen, and the kind attorney down there, Ms. Titanow, thank you so much for coming. Your legal insight and revelation of the gaps in the current laws and practices helped heighten my awareness of this situation personally, so thank you. (speaking Spanish) I think, just as a matter of principle, that no amount could cover the physical loss or the loss of life or trauma associated with this, but I am completely on board with this bill, again, to the principal author, because of the principle of the matter. It's right up there in my humble opinion, Mr. Chairman. As you said, we can go off on a slight tangent, but there's parallel with the war claims amount, which too should also be adjusted to net present value. Because if we don't adjust it to modern times, as Senator Titigui is attempting to do, by what disincentive will we have to compel practitioners to do it right the first time and when it matters the most? So thank you. the loss of life or trauma associated with this. But I am completely on board with this bill, again, to the principal author, because of the principle of the matter. It's right up there in my humble opinion, Mr. Chairman. As you said, we can go off on a slight tangent, but there's parallel with the war claims amount, which too should also be adjusted to net present value. Because if we don't adjust it to modern times, as Senator Taitegui is attempting to do, by what disincentive will we have to compel practitioners to do it right the first time and when it matters the most? So thank you. I stand here in reaffirmation of my support for this bill in its current form and in concept. I also support the few amendments that were recommended by this legal panel. So thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Senator Taitegui.
Thank you, Senator Will. Senator Pito, do you have any questions you would like to pose into the panel, sir?
First off, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I want to thank the author of the bill, Senator Taitegui. And I also want to thank the panel for their expertise in presenting the issues regarding this particular bill. I agree with the bill, but at this point in time, I don't really support the bill. There's a lot of issues to this bill. The amount mentioned bothers me a lot because I would say that there's no amount of money that can replace the life of a person, and this is one of the thing that I, when I was reading this bill. Another thing that I am concerned about, for example, is the medical professionals. You know, the amount of liabilities for the doctors, if, for example, unintentional. And there's going to be a lot of reluctance on these medical professionals if we were going to hire them to work for the hospital. So we need to consider some kind of compromise with the insurance company to cover the doctor because no doctor is going to say, "I'm going to accept, you know, paying a million dollars or $300,000 for something that I didn't mean to do." And of course, we know that there's some medical treatment that occurs and the doctor tried his very best to save that person, but however, you know, our creator is the will for the life of us. And it concerns me because what are we going to do if we don't have enough medical professionals that have the skill for certain medical problems that we have? If I am a doctor and I face the liability for some even unintentional wrongdoing on my part as a doctor and I try to do my best to save a person, I will not work for the hospital. So I ask, Mr. Chairman, if we can, I'm not recommending that we send this bill back to the committee, but I'm asking that all the senators and invite all the doctors and invite the administrator for the hospital, for example, to join us and dialogue and interact and come out with some of the issues that we need to satisfy this particular bill. That's my concern. And like I mentioned, the amount is, the amount is way too low if we want to look at it. Like I mentioned in the beginning, there's no amount of money that can replace the life of a person. And I want to thank the author of the bill for coming out with this because I like the bill, I like the intent of the bill, but I don't really support this kind of bill until we get everybody together, those professionals and the insurance companies, the senators and even the governor, to come out and not compromise, but talk this thing over because a lot of people does not agree with the amount, especially doctors. And not only the doctors at the hospital or doctors at a medical clinic, but also the government itself. Right now, we're facing a dilemma in our economy. And we're talking about making this amount, building the amount that is actually recommended. But I don't, I don't see the amount as reasonable. The amount is very low and I like, I appreciate with one of our guests here, that, you know, the amount is way too low. So, Mr. Chair, I ask, because I'm not going to refer this bill back to the committee, but I think we should interact and discuss the issues that will come by if we pass this bill. I'm concerned about, you know, the medical professionals and I'm concerned about the government also. So we need to go back and talk about this, Mr. Chair, and maybe we can create some kind of compromise that is conclusive to the intent of this bill. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator July. Senator Kelly, Maris Taiten.
Sutusmaasi, Mr. Chair, and sutusmaasi to all of you for participating today. Each of you provided really important considerations for us. This is important for us to revisit. This is why when the author discussed this with me and we talked about how the rates hadn't been increased or adjusted in 40 years, it definitely seemed like it was something that needed to be looked at. So I have a few questions for Attorney Titanow. How often, if, to the best of your ability, how often has a claim reached that threshold? Just for contextual information. Does it, does it happen very often?
Well, I believe when the claims are filed, they may, more than likely, will ask for the maximum. I don't have the amount that was actually paid out versus the claim, but as I told Senator Taitegui earlier, I will provide the information when I submit the data that we've compiled. But just be mindful that the data that we will be presenting to the legislature is only for line agencies. It doesn't include the hospital, which may be a significant number of medical claims, right, for negligence or wrongful death. So what I will be providing is just a representation of claims against line agencies. And as I said earlier, for example, we have pending 68 claims at our office, but a majority of that are contractual claims and the rest are tort claims. So although we do receive tort claims, it seems like a majority of the claims, at least right now with our office, are contractual. But as I, but I will provide this information to the legislature after today's hearing.
Sutusmaasi, I think that information, you know, all the contextual information we can get is going to be really helpful. And it's also important to know, as you were saying, that the claimant would perhaps ask for the maximum amount and then it will be up to the negotiation or the court decision to find out that final agreement. Is there such a thing as a typical state government threshold? Or is there a range to your understanding of what states at this point typically have as their thresholds?
I haven't actually researched other jurisdictions. I believe Attorney Keo mentioned in his presentation that some other states have thresholds. And he did indicate in his testimony, and he could correct me if I'm wrong, that this, the one being proposed in this legislation is on the lower end compared to other jurisdictions. But I don't know what the other jurisdictions are because you, of course, naturally you wanted to find one that's similar to Guam, especially in.
The other jurisdictions or other states have as their thresholds or if a threshold is indeed common?
Yes, I can leave this with the legislature if you wish. It's a printout of a website that lists the 50 states and what their damage caps are. And, you know, you can go through them. The state of Washington, none. The state of Iowa, none. Some of them are, you know, appears the, if I can find some others. Indiana, $500,000 and $700,000. So we are on the low end. At $100,000, we're below any jurisdiction. At $200,000, we're still at the low end. So, I mean, comparing us to other states, of course, the Guam tax base is probably lower than the state of Washington's tax base, for example. So these are fiscal issues. But if I may just make one comment to correct one, what I think is a misapprehension about the purpose of this statute, this just sets a cap on what government agencies, line agencies or non-line agencies like GMH, is not a line agency, they're a, I forget the term they use for it, but it's a.
Autonomous.
Autonomous agency, thank you. It sets the cap of what that agency would be required to pay. At GMH, for example, the doctor doesn't have to pay the $200,000. The doctor pays nothing. You can't sue a doctor if they're a government employee, you can only sue the agency. If a driver of a school bus injures somebody in an accident, you don't sue the driver of the school bus, you sue the Department of Public Works or Department of Education. I think the school buses are DPW. So there's no impact of the government claims against the government employees. They're immune from suit. Doctors that work at GMH, if they negligently injure somebody and no doctor, I can't imagine any doctor in the history of the world has ever intentionally injured somebody. It's always an accident. It's always negligence. And if they negligently injure somebody by doing something that is clearly below the standard of care, at GMH, you don't sue the doctor, you sue the hospital. And it's up to the hospital to negotiate the claim. And in this case, if it resulted in a death, it's currently $100,000. If it's increased, it would be $200,000 for the loss of a life. I agree, Senator, that these limits, that these caps are low and there's no amount of money, but that would mean eliminating caps altogether and that's not within the purview of this legislation.
Sutusmaasi for those many considerations, you know, to hear what is going on in the other areas and what some of the issues are. I mean, we need to continue to look at this really carefully and think about these updates. The other question I had was, since you have done some of that research, have you come across anything that is, for maybe lack of a better term, kind of a formula for how these are calculated? Obviously, the no limit, there's no calculation there, but for the states that do have limits, have you found any, any formula or criteria as to how they arrived at their numbers?
For damages?
For their damage caps.
There is a formula that insurance companies use. Frankly, I hate it and I never do it. What insurance companies, what insurance council will regularly tell me is they look at what's called special damages, which are your out-of-pocket expenses such as medical expenses, lost income, any other out-of-pocket expenses, and to value their claim, they multiply those special damages times three. I hate it because I had a case a number of years ago where a man lost his leg and his out-of-pocket expenses were negligible. He was unemployed, he had medical expenses that were covered by insurance, but he lost his leg. And if you multiply, what his out-of-pocket expenses were, something like $5,000 for some incidental expenses, you multiply that times three, you give him $15,000 for the loss of his leg, it makes no sense. So formulas are difficult because they are, take a broad approach as opposed to a person-to-person approach. How you evaluate somebody's loss, it's really subjective. It depends on how a judge or if you don't, if you're not in a government claim situation, you have a juror, a jury. There are books that will tell you what juries have done on cases or what judges have awarded on cases, but it's a broad spectrum. So I really can't answer the question as far as how do you evaluate something. That's up to the individual evaluating it.
Well, based on what you're saying, and definitely, I mean, individual is different than the broad policy. So it maybe is that much more important to look at what all 50 states are doing and what the fellow territories are doing to see where their caps are and maybe figure out why they are where they are. So I look forward to that list and, you know, I just do want to specifically say to Mr. Lebowski and, excuse me, Mr. Lebowski and Mr. Bell, that your sharing your perspectives was really important. It gives us actual incidences to consider and, you know, trying to figure out that balance between how to make the government the most accountable is going to be important. Mr. Bell?
I'm sorry, if I may, I wanted to tack on to something and I appreciate the opportunity. I'll keep it really short, but just two quick points is that when we're talking about limiting the caps, right, we're trying to protect the taxpayers, right? I get that, it's a laudable goal, but keep in mind that when somebody suffers a horrific injury and they're not able to work, they're not able to feed their family, where do you think they get the money from, right? They get the money from taxpayers anyway. I'm, I know this is kind of an oversimplification, but it's largely true, certainly my clients, people who, you know, really the David versus Goliath scenario, right? And so I've seen my clients become homeless and not be able to feed their families and I've seen the suffering that they go through. And I'm not being dramatic about this, I'm saying that as a practical matter, you know, they become, you know, they end up on welfare, they end up, you know, on food stamps and those are all wonderful programs that the taxpayers pay for anyway. So that would be one point is that the taxpayers sort of end up, you know, footing the bill anyway, really, just, you know, in a different way. And then just broadly speaking, they're similar to what Attorney Keo said, there are formulas. Frankly, you can find a personal injury calculator online, which, you know, insurance companies are familiar with and a lot of our personal injury attorneys will use. And my point would be, so there are ways to objectively find out sort of the market value of your injury. And what the cap does is keep this in mind, in addition to the fact that the taxpayers end up paying for this anyway, you know, when they don't get fully compensated by this injury caused by the government, number one. But number two, it's a cap, so it's necessarily the case that you're never going to get more from the government than you would have anyway if there was no cap. And it is necessarily the case that you have, for example, somebody who's, you know, spinal cord is severed, you know, and they're in a wheelchair for the rest of their life. I actually have a client that this happened. It was a technically workers' comp claim, but a young man fell out of a tree and crushed his spine and he was in his early twenties and had a wife and two kids. He could never, he can't even walk, he much less work again. And so imagine his damages, you know, millions of dollars. And so what that was a workers' comp claim, but imagine if that was a personal injury claim, it'd be millions of dollars. That cap would cut him off, in this case, at $500,000. And so I'm not saying that, it is a tough sell to say we should get rid of the cap altogether, but I do want to just make that point that this is definitely a compromise, right? Because whereas the government would be, theoretically could be on the hook for millions, we're capping off $500,000. That's quite a reasonable compromise, frankly, for this purposes of protecting the judiciary. I thank you for allowing the additional comment.
Absolutely. And Mr. Lebowski, given the discussion that we've had thus far, or anything else that you'd like to add before I move back to the chair?
Based on what I've said so far, I think I see. I think what this law intends, or this bill intends to do, this has been said over and over again, but I want to repeat it, is to look at caps for the, what the hospital has to pay, as an example, referring to the doctors. The way it's set up, and Attorney Keo has already said this, the doctors at the hospital don't pay anything. It's not really necessary to have them in the room because nothing comes out of their pockets. My advocacy is to change that though, which would be a different bill where the doctors in the hospital would have to have malpractice. And rather than the citizens on Guam to taxpayer dollars paying for what happens at the hospital of its malpractice, that the doctors are required to have their own malpractice, at least at a minimal amount. So when something happens, they become responsible for it. But this bill has nothing to do with that. This bill just basically sets the caps. If something happens, if a doctor kills you. If something happens, if a doctor kills you in the hospital and it's his fault, or he never shows up in the room and the child dies, you get $200,000. Big deal. So the doctor has nothing to do, the doctor just walks away. And that's the sort of way our system is set up right now. So in terms of bringing doctors in and getting permission from them and talking to administrators and all these other things, it's really not that complicated with this bill. Maybe another bill would be better and so forth, but the way things are right now, it's a simple bill. Raise it for $200,000. It's still under the cost of living, but it would be helpful to, and people who sustained injuries, $200,000, $500,000. This is one of the most simple bills I've seen, actually. Thank you very much.
May I add one other comment if I can?
Definitely.
On the idea, when I raised the concept of enforcement, there are plenty of provisions in the law, as it's not implicated by this statute at this time, but for example, if a government agency, like the hospital or any other autonomous or line agency, were to get insurance on vehicles on the road, then that insurance would not be subjected to the cap. The insurance, if you've got a million-dollar insurance policy on your public works trucks out there, then any person that was injured would not be limited by this cap. They could bring their claim against the insurance, but they don't. None of the government agencies have insurance. The hospital doesn't have insurance. It's provided in the law that if they do, that the limit is the insurance policy, but they don't do it. That's the enforcement issue, is that they're allowed to do it, but they don't do it.
Sutusmaasi, for all the additional information, as I said before, it's just, you know, it's so important to hear all of these different aspects so that we give it as much consideration as possible, and then perhaps consider additional bills to continue to tackle these issues as well. Sutusmaasi, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Kelly. I would have Senator Titagui, the author of the bill, to please close, and so we can wrap this one up. Thank you.
Sutusmaasi, Mr. Chair, and again, I want to thank you for holding this public hearing and not having to wait another 40 years before we adjust these inflated issues that we come across when bills are so old that have not been addressed. I appreciate everyone, Shannon, thank you so much, for the Attorney General having representation here, Attorney Bell, Attorney Keo, and David Lebowski. I greatly appreciate you being here. Your efforts will help steer this bill into the session floor and pass, and you will be, you know, contributed to that end result. And to my colleagues who are here to testify, or not testify, to ask questions, to my colleague Senator Peter Chulai, if he feels this is too low of a cap, then I hope he makes an amendment on the session floor to have no limits, no caps on it, if he feels that strongly about it. But the point is, if we can able to, if we're able to sue companies out there that provide service, you know, to no limit, and sue them, the government of Guam provides the same kind of services out there, and if we can't, you know, help individuals who've been wrongfully negligent, to a point they were wronged by any kind of fault of the government of Guam, they should be compensated and justly compensated. But we need to do something first here, and that is to look at the inflated cost, the rising cost from 40 years today, and just make that whole at this point, and hopefully incorporate certain amendments in there that my good, the oversight chair, who mentioned about the attorney's fees as well as, no, the retroactive application, that's going to be important. We're going to look into that and probably incorporate that. But again, I appreciate it, and I'm sure all the people of Guam also appreciate you being here, the four of you. Sutusmaasi. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Titano, and I thank my colleagues for all their questions, and the panel for joining us today and your testimony. The committee will conclude this public hearing on Bill 215-35COR. The committee will continue to receive testimony. Please address your written testimony to the Committee on General Government, Operations, Appropriations, Housing, and submit it via email to senatorjoessenagstein@gmail.com. Sutusmaasi for your attendance and participation in today's hearing. And for those at home, thank you for watching. Please enjoy your day and have a safe weekend. Take care.